Yeah. Okay, good evening. Nice to see so many people here. Welcome to the Cumberland School Committee. I would like to call the Cumberland School Committee to order on Thursday, October 26, 2023 at 7 o'clock PM. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
The United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation under guide invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Just for the record, I'd like to note that Ms. Smith cannot be here tonight. The next item on the agenda is Approval of Agenda. Need a motion to approve? Motion by Mrs. Rogalski? Second by Mrs. Feather and Mrs. Vogel. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes six to zero. The next item on the agenda is the Student Government Report.
Hello, all. I am Rose Demissso, Junior Class President.
And I am Emma Cruz, Sophomore Class President.
And we are here on behalf of Student Government to share what we have accomplished so far this school year.
This year, Spirit Week was October 2nd through October 7th. We had a great turnout, having our typically friendly competitions with class banners, Powderpuff, Class Clash, and Trivia. Powderpuff had the most student participation with the most tickets ever sold in CHS history, along with our fun pep rally. Our homecoming dance was on October 7th, and it also helped us to start the year on a great note. Overall, the seniors managed to take the Spirit Week victory, narrowly defeating the juniors, and the sophomores then placed third, and the freshmen followed.
Next up on our agenda is our annual PhilaChuck fundraiser, where Student Government works together to raise money and collect canned goods for those in need during the holiday season. Students will compete during A3 classes to collect the most canned goods, and the class that wins will receive a breakfast from the establishment of their choice. Classes will be collecting November 1st through the 17th. Additionally, we will be looking for donations on November 18th and 19th at Ciabro Foods in Cumberland to also help many families over the holidays.
So far, the year has been going great, and we are so excited for what the rest of it will bring. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have a quick question. You said the seniors won Class Clash?
Yeah.
Did they also win Powderpuff? Is that separate?
So they didn't win Class Clash, but they won Spirit Week as a whole. The juniors won Class Clash.
Oh, juniors won Clash, yeah, Clash, and the seniors won Spirit Week overall. So, and do you know who, in Powderpuff? Okay, alright.
They won Powderpuff. I think they might have won...
The sophomores won the dance part of it.
Alright.
Go sophomore.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Item A: Approval of Minutes from the Regular Meeting 10-12-2023. And Item B: Approval of Minutes from the Executive Session 10-12-2023. I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Motion by Mrs. Rogalski?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes six to zero. Next item on the agenda is Personnel Announcements.
Good evening. We have three personnel announcements. We have two resignations. The first one is Effective 10-18, Aubrey Fanuth, 1-2-1 paraprofessional at North Cumberland Middle School. The second, Effective 10-23-23, Nancy Alves, MLL teacher at McCourt. And we have one leave of absence for next school year, 2024-2025. That's Kathleen DeMonica, a science teacher at Cumberland High School.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Report Hour of Executive Session Meeting on 10-26-2023. Item One: Report Hour of Executive Session Votes. We did not take any votes in Executive Session. The next item is a vote to seal the minutes of the Executive Session. I need a motion to seal the minutes? Motion by Mrs. Rogalski? Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes six to zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Thornton.
Good evening, Madam Chair. First up, we have a recognition. We have a Feinstein Junior Scholar Golden Ticket winner in the audience. Principal Carter and Ava, please come up.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce Ava Barboza. She is in 2nd grade at Garvin, and she is our Golden Ticket winner. Not only is this very exciting, but there was a lot of commotion around this Golden Ticket. We knew we had a winner at Garvin, but we could pinpoint the class, we just couldn't pinpoint the child. And every parent in that classroom was searching for their ticket while Ava and her family were in Disney World. The stress got to the point where there were phone calls to Disney World saying, "Hey, can we go into your house to see if you're the winner?" Luckily, the Feinstein Foundation let us wait until they returned before we confirmed that they were the winners, and we are so excited. Ava has selected Make-A-Wish Foundation as her charitable donation, so the Feinstein Foundation will be donating $500 to Make-A-Wish Foundation, and Garvin will also be receiving $5,000.
Wow.
Congratulations, Ava.
And next up, we have the Cumberland School Volunteers Annual Report. I have Roxanne Hyken and Stephanie Zerber here tonight.
Hi, I am Roxanne Hyken, and I am the current Director of the Cumberland School Volunteers. The Cumberland School Volunteers, or CSV, is pleased to provide this annual report to members of the community whose support is essential to the organization's work. The CSV's mission is to support and promote volunteerism in an effort to build strong connections between schools, educators, parents, and the community. In keeping with this mission, the CSV has connected volunteers with the schools, offered its own programs, and engaged high school students with volunteer opportunities within the school's and Cumberland community. This report serves as a snapshot of the CSV's work and accomplishments. It also recognizes the active volunteers who provide support to staff and students in a variety of ways, both during and outside of school. I am now going to give the floor to Board Member Stephanie Zerber, who has dedicated 10 years serving on the CSV Board to present the CSV highlights from last school year.
Thank you. The Cumberland School Volunteers has sponsored the Reading is Fundamental RIF program in Cumberland for over 40 years. RIF offers students the opportunities to self-select books. The CSV was able to offer RIF programs in all five elementary schools, which included all preschool students. The CSV purchased over 6,700 new books for RIF distributions and approximately 2,200 students. Each RIF event was staffed by enthusiastic groups of volunteers, which included parents, grandparents, community members. In total, over 15 different individuals volunteered at RIF distributions at each school. For over 10 years, the CSV has been responsible for 100% of the RIF program's costs. During the past year, the organization was awarded 4,500 state legislative grants secured by Senator Ryan Pearson and Senator Roger Picard, a $4,000 legislative grant from Representative Mia Ackerman, a $1,000 grant from the Town of Cumberland. Additionally, Bristol Co., Charitable Savings Foundation, awarded CSV a $1,000 grant to support our program in the 2022-2023 school year. In addition to RIF book distributions, the CSV partnered with the Town of Cumberland and nonprofits in the fall of 2022 to host the Haunted Not-So-Scary Family Fun Day at Diamond Hill Park. This Halloween-themed event, children in Cumberland were invited to participate in a walk-through event and received a goodie bag and a new book. The CSV passed out about 400 books in just two hours. Furthermore, the CSV provided bilingual books to Cumberland Hill Elementary School as they are starting their first-ever ESL library. The Cumberland School Volunteer also proudly donated 100 books to the Garvin Memorial School's Book Drive to support Hasbro Children's Hospital. The CSV also sponsors the program Just Friends. The Just Friends program is a disability awareness program for the 4th grade students in Cumberland School Department's five elementary schools. Unfortunately, the CSV is continuing to look for a new coordinator for this program, working diligently to get Just Friends program back into our schools. In addition to its program, since 1992, the CSV has awarded one Community Service Award to members of our graduating class at the Cumberland High School. The $500 award was given to a student who best exemplifies the spirit of meaningful community involvement, believing that any definition of a successful life includes serving others. The purpose of the award is to acknowledge the life-enriching energy, idealism, and engagement of Cumberland's young adults. The CSV Board selected Katherine Galgay as the 2023 Community Service Award recipient. The CSV continues to engage high school students with community service opportunities in Cumberland. As part of the high school graduation requirements, all students must complete service learning hours. Through outreach efforts, the CSV identifies volunteer opportunities within the schools and the community, and in turn shares them with CHS administration and students. The CSV will continue to promote and support service learning in the community's youth. CSV is also excited to share that for the first time since the pandemic, the organization was able to recognize volunteers at its annual celebration event. The reception theme for this year was "Volunteers: Always Needed and Forever Appreciated." The CSV recognized all school volunteers with special acknowledgement given to those who have made significant volunteer contributions. With that said, observations and interactions of principals and school staff were greatly valued in the selection process of award recipients. Principals and PTO presidents came together to choose one individual from their school to receive a volunteer recognition award. In addition to award recipients, were chosen by the CSV to show our appreciation for their dedication to Reading is Fundamental. This year's award recipients were Jennifer Allen from Garvin, Ally Herow from Community, Kimberly Nichols from BF Norton, Isabel Neves from RIF, Jennifer O'Reilly from Cumberland Preschool, Jennifer Rondell from RIF, Tameka Soliere from Ashton, and Amy Thistle from Cumberland Hill. Please know, all of the program and event costs must be raised by CHV/CSV each year. In addition to the grants and charitable donations mentioned earlier, Cumberland School Volunteers receives financial support for its programs through donations of the annual United Way Campaign and other employee charitable giving campaigns by both employees of the Cumberland School Department, parents, and the community members. Amazon Smile, Councilman Michael Kinch, School Committee Members Dennis Collins, the PTOs of two elementary schools, Alpha Delta Kappa Society, Kathleen Darby, Hunter Insurance, Navigant Credit Union, Bank Newport, and Costa One Credit Union. Additionally, the Cumberland School Department has continued to support CSV's basic organizational needs. I would like to end by acknowledging the work of the Cumberland School Volunteers is enhanced by the members of its Board of Directors. The Board is chaired by Jen Fisher. Other members include our Vice Chair Lynn Jordan, Secretary Paula Pavoyer, co-treasurers Kath Stink and Kim Smullen, Sabine Grant, myself, Mary Yu, and Diane Grennan. The CSV looks forward to a continued partnership in 2023-2024 with the Cumberland School Department promoting volunteerism in the community. Thank you.
Thank you for all the wonderful work that you do.
Next up, Mike. So I know every year, Mr. DeMona gives you a very thorough RICAS Assessment update in early December. I wanted to kind of steal some of the thunder from Tony and his team and give him you a 10,000-foot view now, so you kind of get a sense for where we are. So first, I want to give you a little context. I think context matters. We're talking about test scores. I think sometimes you watch the news outlets, and they just kind of talk about the schools and the towns and how they did, and I think demographics can give you context. There's a book called Kid's Count Factbook. Gives you a lot of good indicators. I gave you just three. I want to take you through. Then I'll show you just, you know, how we stacked up in Rhode Island. This first chart is just kids taking part in school breakfast. You can see Cumberland has a 14th highest percentage, or 20% of the students taking part in the program. I know you probably can't see it, but I have it at your places, but I think that's important to note. So we're, you know, in that 14th area in terms of that category. Next, Mike? This next one, it's demographics. I'd point you to the fifth column over, percent low income. And I want you to note here, we're 18%, we're the 15th in that category. And if you could look at the lowest three, Barrington, East Greenwich, Jamestown. And you'll know later on, those are three of the highest-scoring districts in state testing, and I would say that's not a coincidence. I think typically, higher SES has some advantages. Percentage of income, I think, can directly and does impact student performance. Cumberland being 15th, I think, my argument is, I think we are actually overachieving our demographic, and that's a credit to our teachers, administrators, and students, all rolling in the same direction. It's really a great achievement. Next slide. This last one I wanted to show you is MLL, Multi-Language Learners. And you can see here, Cumberland is 17th in this category with 4%. Actually, it's interesting. We had 188 kids last time Kid's Count did this in 2223. We're at 281 right now, and climbing. We're getting a lot of MLLs in Cumberland every day. So that's interesting. So kind of keep that in mind as I show you this next slide. This next slide, Tony made this for me, Mr. DeMona. Once again, MLL broken out by building first. You can get a sense for the district. Ashton, 22; BF, 63; Cumberland Hill, 40; Community, 13; Garvin, 31; McCourt, 41; NCMS, 13; High School, 58; 281 total. You can see, it's across the town. We are truly getting more diverse in Cumberland. So test scores, we just, as you can see here, we're fifth in ELA and fifth in math. Once again, it's a great achievement to the teachers, the administrators, and the students. It's a real great outcome. Mr. DeMona has informed me that in math down below, we're at 58% on average, and that's our highest ever, pre- or post-pandemic, highest ever. Mic drop. That's it. Highest ever. Yep. ELA, we're around 55. The high water mark was 61 pre-pandemic. Give you a sense, we're getting back to that number. But once again, look at context now. Look at the top four in front of Cumberland for context. First, Little Compton, 70.8 for their ELA score, 12% for the free lunch, and they test 110. As you recall, Tony often telling you, sample size matters, right, Mr. DeMona? And a sample of 110 different than a sample of 2,070 in Cumberland. Second, Barrington, 69.1, 6% the free lunch, 1,500, a good sample, but just, I think, a little less in the free lunch category. EG, you can see, same situation. Jamestown, once again, small sample, 280, and then Cumberland. So I just want to kind of reiterate, I think demographics do give you context on these scores, and fifth place is an achievement for Cumberland. So once again, a credit to everyone. So I wanted to give you that, just a, you know, a quick thumbnail. And I'll give you one more, just one more factoid to kind of give you a teaser of, you know, how we did. Garvin School, pre-post pandemic, moved up 26 points, I believe, in mathematics, right, Tony? So since Mr. Carter's here, just a real outstanding achievement. We're really moving. So it's really encouraging. So happy to answer any questions on testing. Please save any detailed questions for December, Mr. DeMona, but I will answer any general questions today on test scores. If you have any. You may not have any.
I do have a general question, but it might not be fair to ask tonight. But did we, did we end up where we thought we would end up? I know Mr. DeMona and his team does a lot of prediction and data analysis, and they have a good sense of where we might end up.
I would say yes. Mr. DeMona and his team do an analysis. They had to make assumptions of where the cut scores might be, not knowing, because RICAS doesn't release cut scores to us. They made the assumption, and they were spot on.
Not surprised. Do you have a question, Mr. Feather? I'll defer. Okay. Yeah, Mr. Collins.
Dr. Thornton, perhaps you don't have in front of you. Do you know how the Cumberland Public Schools performed in comparison to our in-house neighbor, BVP?
I don't have it in front of me, but I know it was substantially lower. I don't have that in front of me.
I do have it in front of me.
No, we did, we, I'm sorry, lower, BVP was lower than Cumberland?
Yes.
I will, I did, I do have that right in front of me. So BVP for ELA was at 29.5%. Cumberland is at 54.8%. And on math, BVP is at 31.2%, and Cumberland is at 57.5%. So we, we, we really, really, really should be the school of choice.
Yeah, and it's obviously not part of the agenda, but, you know, just again, I say this once a month, but we gave them, I think, $3.8 million last year. So again, Mrs. Friedman's point, parents who are considering where they're going to send their children, you know, I, I'm sure they have their reasons, and it's no fault of their own, but there's an obvious distinction between Cumberland Public Schools and BVP. And performance-wise, even with the school construction, I know that's coming up. You know, I'm very proud to send my children to Cumberland Public Schools.
Thank you. Mike, move on, please. Next up, one more commercial just for your, the free clinics for the flu. Also, I'm told COVID will be, the COVID shot will be available, not COVID itself. And you can see the date there is November 9, 8:00 AM, 10:30 AM. So that's our last clinic. Mike? Onto construction. So this is interesting. This is Garvin, and that's the new fence line going in. And this was a few hours before the next picture you'll see in a few minutes. That's the parking lot. Go for it, Mike. The paint accent has come in at Garvin. You can see that's finished. And you can see the area is completed over here. That's all in, all ductwork. That's the heating system for part of the building. It's all completed, just in time. Next line. The gates are in at Garvin. We have gates now for the parking area. The basketball hoops are in at Garvin. We're going to get some metal nets. I'm a fan of the metal nets. I like the sound it makes when you make the basket, so we're going to get the metal nets. Next, Lynch Construction came out today, and they do, they did this. The basketball court now is gone. We're doing a new basketball court for Garvin. So tomorrow, the binder or the first coat goes down, Saturday, second coat. And now Michelle and her team are going to figure out what we want to paint on there. Basketball key, a four-square court. What do they want? That's happening as we speak. Very exciting. This is the area by Lonsdale Farm. I know I spoke to a couple homeowners today via email or phone call. Just to give you a rundown or a summary, as you may recall, we made two underground drainage systems at Garvin that met in this area. It's been in the area that's been kind of wet for a long time. Come to find out, there's a town drainage pipe over here that hasn't been utilized in many, many, many years, because there are trees in the way, down trees, just stuff in the way. So for our current plan, our original plan, we didn't have that remedy. The town took up the task to do a final remedy for this. They're making a small retention area, and it'll connect to the town drainage. I know some folks were concerned about the trees that came down. They are replanting at least 10 trees, if not more, in the area. So that will be redone, if you will. That's a springtime job for those trees. They're doing some trees next week at Garvin, but this tree group would be next spring. So I want you to know that is underway, and that's a town initiative, which is really, really happy about that. The town's helping out. Next. The kitchen at Garvin is in. The new equipment is in. If you saw the old kitchen at Garvin, we really appreciate the new kitchen. So it's all new appliances, dishwasher, everything's going in, so very exciting. That's the cafeteria, and that's almost being turned over to Mr. Jesus for waxing. That's any day now. That's the front room. That's the art room, and that has been turned over to us, so nice space. And next, that's the library or the STEM room in the addition. Once again, looking good. Ashton, the roof, the new roof is almost complete. You can see on the left, new, on the right, old. We had 11 active leaks in Ashton's roof, so it was really time we did it, so that's exciting. That's almost done. Another picture of the completed roof at Ashton. Demolition is happening in the building. It's quite the mess. When you go in, that's one of the hallways. That's the office. What used to be the office, that's being demoed. That's a wall that came down, so I want to get a picture of that. A bathroom, and another bathroom. Go ahead. That's it. So, like I said, Ashton's characterized by demolition right now. Garvin, we're in the finishing stages. And once again, happy to answer any questions you may have on construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Next on the agenda, Reports of Standing Committees. Item A, Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Mr. Collins?
Good evening. Thank you. The Fiscal Management Subcommittee met this evening. We only have two resolutions this evening, and we have no payment of the bills, but a point of order, because we obviously get dozens and dozens of people at our Fiscal Management Subcommittee meetings. We did have to move the next meeting date. It's typically the night of the open, the full meeting. So it will be moved from November 9th, it's usually at 5 o'clock. It'll be moved to the previous Wednesday, the day before, November 8th at 4:30 PM because of some scheduling conflicts that week. So mark your calendars, everybody. I know you're all going to be there. So the executive and the Assistant Superintendent's Office, so it should be a lot of fun. There's candy for the people. So, and Mr. DeMona should also know that there's a lot less candy in your office than there was when you were there today, so.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next, Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorella?
Policy and Procedures did not meet. We are going to schedule one over the next couple of weeks. We're just trying to work out everybody's schedules, though.
Next is the Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. We did meet this week. We had one topic, which was to discuss the goals and the plan for the McCourt Middle School and the partnership that's happening between the principals of NCMS and McCourt. So Principal Storm and Principal Coughlin came in and presented their joint plan. You know, two middle schools, one focus. And, you know, I think we're all really excited to see, I think, the great things they can accomplish by coming together. And Principal Coughlin offering and stepping up to mentor Principal Storm in her new role. I think only good can come out of all of this, so that was a great meeting. Next is the, oh yeah, Mr. Collins?
Can I say that, obviously, since I'm a member of the committee? I think it's very important to also highlight, and it's obviously public, that the district, the plan, and obviously, the leadership is in good hands with a seasoned person like Mrs. Coughlin and Ms. Storm, who's obviously well-liked and very, very good, and very, and her faculty supports her. But, you know, a lot, you know, social media and whatnot, the priority placed on behavior, getting that in check first. And that was obviously a main topic of discussion during that meeting, and the plan to address some of the things, and it's not as bleak. I think social media exacerbates things, but there are some things, challenges, that all schools face, not just McCourt. And so they have a real strong plan in place to address some of the things that have been floating around there. So I'm excited to see what happens and getting, you know, and they're obviously focusing on the student achievement, which is what all the students are there for in the first place, and the teachers, and so on and so forth. So I'm really excited. I'm real optimistic, and it's going to be great. I know it's in good hands.
Thanks for the update, Mr. Collins. Next, District Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update. Mrs. Rogalski?
I am back. I know you have all missed my health and wellness updates. We had our first meeting of the year last week, and I do have several different updates to share. The first I'm actually really excited about, we're really excited about. At our meeting, we had in Rhode Island Recycling and Bootstraps Composting. We are going to begin a recycling and composting program here in the district. We're starting with Community as our pilot school. They estimate about 2,500 tons of food each year from Ryan Schools is sent to the landfill. 388 tons of that is perfectly good food, which is a lot of waste. So they went and got funding from the EPA, and they're running these programs throughout the state. And we are one of the next districts to start it. So as you might remember, we started Share Tables. Last year, I spoke about how children can leave food that gets uneaten, and it gets redistributed to other students in need, or the nurse's office, or the counselor, or the principal, to have different food. We're kind of taking that a step further now. Beginning November 1st, every elementary school will now have a liquid waste bucket in their cafeteria. As the kids come up, they empty that liquid out, and that reduces what we're sending to the landfill. It reduces the weight of what we're sending. Community will have a full station. There are going to be a lineup of cans run by student rangers. They come in and they train students, and they have parent volunteers that come in as well to help. There's going to be first a cooler for unopened drinks. After that will be a liquid bucket where you empty your liquids. Then it's recycling pail. Then it's a composting bin for all food. And then finally, it's trash. And so the idea is, hopefully by 2030, we're reducing our overall food waste by 50%. So again, we're starting that full program in just Community, and then hoping to spread it to the other schools. In the two years that they have been running it, in eight other schools in the state, they've reduced the carbon footprint of those schools by seventy metric tons. So that is eleven thousand and six hundred meals reclaimed in just two years. So you can kind of get an idea of how much this is going to help. Um, so we're very, very excited about that program to roll that out. We had Apple Crunch Day on the nineteenth, we had four of our elementary schools participate in that, where all the kids get a local apple, I think this was from Jazz Wells Farm in Smithfield, um, where they all take a bite of an apple at the same time across the state, it's very cute. It's nice, it's local, it's local farm, you know, it's supporting local businesses, it's not, you know, shipped in from Washington State or somewhere else. We had our new Special Education Director stop in and introduce herself to us, and she did want to pass on that the Special Education Advisory Committee is looking for more parents to participate in their meetings. They do meet monthly, and they're in person and virtually to make it easy for participants, and they're starting a new format this year where every month she will be presenting on a different topic. So that was that. Mr. Crowley updated us on the Athletic Department. They brought in nutritionists to speak with the girls' cross-country team first, specifically about how important nutrition and iron is, uh, with female athletes, they're hoping to spread that to more female athletes, and eventually to the entire kind of student-athlete body, because it can only help to help learn about nutrition and how to really fuel and keep yourself healthy. We have an athletic trainer now at the high school, working with select teams, they're only doing contact sports currently, um, field hockey, football, and soccer, but it's great to have him for injuries on the field, for example, we had a concussion in JV football, but also for things like taping before games to help kind of support the players' bodies. We're hoping to expand him to other sports next year. And they also attended a leadership conference with athletes a few weeks ago, and they're going to be attending a Rhode Island Interscholastic League Symposium on Mental Health in high school athletes in a few weeks, and they're gonna bring that back to the athlete-student body. And last, I attended the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition Breakfast this morning along with Dr. Thornton and a few other people from the district, learned about a bunch of different programs that are going to be very interesting, some for teacher wellness, creating a new health curriculum PD opportunity, which Mr. Demana has already been working on to implement in the district, and increasing our farm-to-table offerings, uh, with Sedexo. So I'm actually gonna be touring some of the cafeterias next week, um, with Shauna Trudell from Sedexo, as well as the Big Green Machine, which is our hydroponic garden here at the high school, which is back up and operating, it wasn't for a while, so hopefully over the next few months, we'll have a bunch more stuff to bring to you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Rogalski. Uh, next item on the agenda is comments from the public, if anyone from the public would like to speak. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is old business. Discussion and/or vote to approve the principal's mentorship stipend. And we actually talked about this at the last meeting, this is the mentorship stipend for Principal Coughlin at NCMS to mentor Principal Storm at McCourt. And we had, we didn't vote on it last time because we didn't have a fully written-out kind of job descri- description of accountabilities, we have that now. So tonight, um, I need a motion on the principal's mentorship stipend.
Madam Chair, actually, um, in terms of the dollar amount, just for the record, I'm recommending the dollar amount at ten thousand, seeing that is a year-round position.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Fiorella makes a motion to approve. Second by Mrs. Vogel. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes six to zero. Thank you. Next item is new business, item A, discussion and/or vote on preapproval for an overnight student field trip in November. The New England Interscholastic Cross Country Championship, is this the one, Belfast, Maine? It's the same, this is the same.
Mr. Crowley's here, Madam Chair.
Good evening. Uh, yes, as we enter championship season, there won't be enough time between the state meet, which is November fourth, and New England's, which is November eleventh, for me to come before you, so this is kind of a precursor. Uh, so the top six teams in each state, uh, along with the top twenty-five individuals, if you're not on those top six teams, will qualify for the New England Championships. Last year, they were upon a Gansit. This year, uh, we're very fortunate, it's a course that we know that we run every year at the Main Festival of Champions, it's the exact same course at the Troy Howard Middle School on, uh, Saturday, November eleventh. Um, the, the plan is that the, the girls' team is gonna head up Thursday after school, and wake up Friday and do all our work there. The boys' team is gonna leave Friday morning and do their work on Friday afternoon. Uh, the hotel is the same hotel that we stay at for the Main Festival of Champions, so everything is the exact same, except we have to qualify, uh, which hopefully, um, we're more than the top six teams is our goal for both Coach Carpenter and myself. Students will be responsible for on that Friday for a day mist of work, of schoolwork, any work they have to do. And actually, when we went up, and I know Coach Carpenter did the same, they have summatives, sometimes some teachers are very cooperative with us, they can take the summer assessment earlier, they'll take the summer assessment later, although miss practice to take, make up their academics, which is very important, obviously. It is all funded through the booster clubs, through donations, and through fundraising efforts. And it's a smaller, um, slight, uh, not slight, smaller demographic, as only the top seven or the top eight will go, in case there are any late scratches, so it's a, it's a smaller adventure, I guess, if you would put it that way.
Mr. Fiorella has a question.
Mr. Crowley, how, how is this all paid for?
Through fundraising and donations.
Okay.
It's the same way, it's the same way that we travel, fundraising and through donations.
All right, thank you.
Oh, go ahead, yep. Mrs. Feather makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogalski. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes six to zero, good luck, I hope you need this approval. Next item on the agenda is presentation by Cropper GIS Consulting LLC on the recent Cumberland demographic study. Dr. Thornton, do you introduce this?
Are we on? Uh, Zoran, are you on?
Yeah, I'm on.
And Megan, are you on?
Good evening.
Great, good evening. So, um, a while back, as you know, we had a study done for, from Cropper in terms of our demographics, and we wanted them to come out and give you an executive summary. Obviously, they don't, uh, live nearby, so we wanted to take opportunity to have them take you through some of the, uh, highlights of our demographic studies. So with that, I would turn it over to the experts.
Hello, my name is, uh, Zoran Stejakovic, uh, I'm a demographer for Cropper GIS Consulting, um, and we've been honored to do this, um, study and the opportunity to work with you guys, uh, and help district, um, developed, uh, develop their planning and budgeting process for the upcoming years. Uh, our project.
It's a little bit hard to hear.
Create forecasts for, sorry? Can you hear me? Yeah, I think so. Um, project objectives, uh, for this study were to, uh, develop forecasts, um, part of it is population forecasts, uh, um, that's the first part of the two-step process, uh, and this population forecast for each school zone, for each elementary school zone drives the enrollment forecast. We do the study by analyzing, uh, current and past, um, demographic patterns and trends, and assessing, assessing what they might look in the future. Uh, we look at demographic, but also housing, economic data, to give us most accurate picture of the trends in the area. And we summarize all this in the report, um, which you assume have in front of you. Uh, there are current, there are findings, um, of all sorts of data, details, and maps, about, um, a process, and then there are forecasts, uh, for each school and school and grade. Who we are, we are, um, planning, uh, consulting firm, um, we work with school districts all across the country, um, our specialty is rezoning, and also demographic reports, um, forecasts, um, we, we develop rezoning plans, um, we do a lot of GIS work, uh, provide GIS content, prepare long-range facility plans, housing impact, pupil yields, feasibility studies, and so on. And we have been doing this for the last twenty years, uh, and a lot of our work is in New England. So data for, collected for, uh, that, that are collected for the studies from multiple sources, uh, first, the school district, uh, which provides a database, uh, for current, current students with their addresses, which we then geocode to see where the, the students live. Uh, this gives us the first idea of, um, on granular level where the students are concentrated. Then we, then we use RIDE data, uh, for historical enrollment, uh, for each school and grade, uh, for the last thirteen years, since two thousand and ten. Uh, and then we look at census data, uh, which Census Bureau actually published, uh, twenty-twenty data just this year, and we are happy to be able to use it for the study. Uh, we also look at twenty-ten data, uh, which along with our, uh, which along with IRS data, uh, gives us, gives us, uh, gives us a base to create, um, migration, um, models. And then we use, um, health data to use, health department data to use, uh, to get our fertility and mortality data, and then Regis is used for, um, for GIS data. So our forecasting process, uh, uh, like I mentioned before, is two-part, uh, first part is population forecast. Uh, this demographic analysis is important for this, just to gain a clear understanding of, um, what's occurring within the area. And in order to know what will happen to school enrollment, you must first know what will happen to the entire population, um, and then age and structure, um, migration dynamics of, for various areas, um, are the primary drivers of population and enrollment change. So, um, as part of a process, we forecast the entire population, uh, for, per, uh, by five-year, five-year cohorts, and then the results of these findings drive the enrollment forecast. So, population forecast is a very important factor, very important part of this process. Um, and, um, factors pertaining to this, you know, we use housing, um, data, um, but also, um, migration data, um, and we determine these trends that are driving the population forecast. And if you'll excuse me, I, I'm getting beeping from my headphones, I think I need to plug them in, so just give me a second, please. Can you hear me now? Okay, I think I'll have to continue without the camera, but that should work.
Okay, we can hear you. Good.
Okay. So, so in order to do enrollment forecast, we have to, we have to do the population forecast, and results of the population forecast for each elementary school zone, um, are included in the report. So forecasting methodology, um, includes a lot of assumptions about housing and economic and political and regulatory environmental factors, which we hold constant for the study. The reason for this is, a lot of these are, most of these are non-demographic factors, um, and the ones that we consider in our forecast, they, they include things like a number of women and childbearing age, changes in fertility and mortality data, um, uh, magnitude and prevalence of net migration, uh, patterns by age, and, and then considerations determined by local neighborhood factors. So, uh, all of these factors are included in our forecast, which is not necessarily, which is not just an extrapolation trend, we, we do not, we do not produce projections, uh, we produce forecasts, uh, which are projections, uh, modified projections. So additionally, you know, like, other non-demographic factors that affect enrollment levels, like, uh, student transfers and, uh, special programs, uh, and opening of charter schools, uh, for these purposes of this study, they're held constant. And, uh, any forecast that would include these factors are scenario-specific factors that are beyond the scope of this study. Uh, so our population model, um, is created, uh, by these components, um, births, deaths, in-migration, out-migration, and obviously, every forecast will have some, some error, um, by, almost by definition. So our step, step, uh, two-step process starts with, um, uh, considering the census blocks first, uh, which are the most granular, uh, census-level data, uh, from which we then create, um, we cut them by attendance zones, uh, and this is a start for, starting point for, um, launch here, which is, uh, twenty-twenty for our population forecast. Uh, and then we use something called cover component method, modified cover component method, um, uh, and once the population forecast is done, we create enrollment forecasts, which are driven by population forecasts, and they're, you, they're created using something called modified average survivorship methods, uh, rate. Another very important data point, and it's provided in the, in the report, are population pyramids, I'm sure you've seen them before, um, each pyramid is sort of a, a footprint of what, um, what the current state of the geographic area in question is, um, and each of these bars represent, give, gives us information of what we might expect in the future. All these, the, obviously, we're focused on school-age children, but they're all connected to, to other, um, age cohorts, obviously, children live with their parents, and they move with their parents. But also here, uh, we look at these older, older age groups, empty nesters and housing, turnover households, because they're the ones most likely, obviously, to sell, um, and to sell house, houses to younger families. So, uh, if we have a higher number of, of empty nester households, uh, or how, turnover households, um, we, what we expect then in the coming years is higher rates of housing turnovers, which then, which then would reflect in, um, more school-age children moving in, not necessarily, but more likely. So, and, and each pyramid for each school zone will look different, and we provide these for, for every school zone, elementary school zone, and then we provide the forecast at twenty-thirty-five, um, pyramid for every school zone. Uh, so results of our, of our, um, forecast are also driven by LeVittan analysis, uh, which is something we do using student geocode. We basically wanna look at where the students in each school are coming from, where they live. So, each row in this, in this table shows enrollments for each school, and each column shows the, the location where the, where the student lives. Uh, and then this green diagonal shows the number, the, the students that live and attend in the same, you know, assigned area. And then you have, uh, we have columns, um, the last column, uh, shows live out, attend in, and then the bottom row shows live in, attend out. Uh, this, this helps inform if, if there's a large number of students enrolled in one school that are coming up from out of, out of the zone, uh, which then will reflect, affect our, uh, forecast. And we do this for elementaries, for middle schools, and high schools. And then we also create maps for, for each school based on the LeVittan analysis, uh, these are called heat maps. Uh, they're basically, they're a visual representation of the, of the tables, um, and they sort of give us a great, um, great view of where the student density is, um, and this is just an example, but obviously, the, the report has the maps for each school. So now to the main, uh, to the main results, um, this is a, this is a population forecast table, this is for the whole district, um, and as you can see, we are, we are expecting growth, we're expecting growth in each five-year period, uh, for the next fifteen years, um, for the next twelve years. And one And one interesting thing here is that median age is actually dropping, which is not very common for a school list, for any geographic area in the country. However, the median age is, starting point is quite high, 42.9 is on the older side. But there's a healthy influx of younger families moving in, is what we're expecting. And you can see that in the school age cohorts, five to nine, and 10 to 14, and 15 to 19. They're all growing. I mean, they're fluctuating, but they're going to be, we're expecting them to be higher by the end of the forecast horizon. However, 0 to 4 age cohort is not necessarily going to grow, which is going to affect the K-5 enrollment, and, you know, 6 to 8 enrollment down the years. But that's after the forecast horizon. So we have these for every elementary school zone. And it's the same for enrollment forecasts, which, again, are driven by population forecasts. And these are the main results for the study. We are expecting, so K-5, we are expecting growth until about midpoint of this 10-year forecast, and then slight precipitous drop to 2268, which is higher than, a little bit higher than now. But there's going to be a peak somewhere. I believe this is, yeah, 26, 27 school year. But then for middle schools and high schools, we expect growth all the way until almost the end of the forecast horizon. And then for the total population, this all adds up to growth. Actually, yeah, constant growth until 10-year period, which I'm expecting, based on these numbers, would start dropping right after 10-year period. Because you see, you can see, there's always a lag. Whatever you see in elementary schools is going to lag to middle school and high school grades. And the same goes with 0 to 4 age cohort preschool. If there's any fluctuation there, it's going to then affect kindergarten enrollment and so on. So overall, yeah, pretty decent growth, but slowdown from what was happening before. Slight slowdown. So the summary of findings, this is basically our executive summary. First, the resident fertility rate is 1.41, which is well below the placement level, 2.1. This is common for New England, and most school districts in the country will have, most areas in the country will have TFR below the placement level, which basically means that without in-migration, to offset this, you would lose population. But we think that there's about 250 people moving in every year in the district, and most of these are in the school age population, including their parents. So 0 to 14, and 25, 39-year-olds. And then 18 to 20-year-old population is going to continue to leave the district, some of them will come back, but that's college population. And then another major outflow is 65-plus age groups, which is the most important factor here, because housing turnover is the main driver of population dynamic change in the district. So changes in your enrollment, you know, they're going to fluctuate, and they're going to primarily be due to varying sizes of cohorts moving in, going through, and leaving the school system. So like I mentioned before, enrollment, elementary enrollment will continue increasing about, until about 27, 28, and then start decreasing. The median age will decrease slightly, but even if the district continues to have the projected amount of annual new housing, and the rate and magnitude and price of existing home sales and mortgage rates will be the dominant factor affecting population enrollment change, which with mortgage rates going up, obviously, is an important factor right now. So and then last note is that district enrollment is forecasted to increase by approximately 7% in the first five years of the forecast horizon, and then further increase by 3.3% in the last five years of the forecast. And that's it. So you have the reports in front of you, and if you have any questions, I can, we can discuss it right now.
Okay, thank you. I think we do have a question. Mrs. Feather? Aren't we already at the 2020, or beyond the 2027 number?
That was in the NESDEC enrollment projection we had last winter.
Okay.
The NESDEC number. Yes.
Okay. Just because, yeah, we were trying to figure out the numbers, and we thought we were already at the 5,023.
The thing is too, when we look at numbers, we have total kids in our, under our care, we're at 5,030. But when you look at what Cropper is doing, it could just be the pre-K-12 enrollment of kids in the seats. We have kids out of district, under our care. So all in, we're at 5,032, I want to say, but that's not what they're taking, not putting that piece in.
Yes, the numbers that we're using are taken from RIDE database for, for each year. And, yeah, they differ from numbers that you guys have, but we wanted to have consistency and have apples to apples when we're comparing, and then when we're assessing our forecast in the coming years, which we do for every year.
Dr. Thornton?
I know for me, part of the challenge is, we are going up, but I think you had said we're not including the charter school equation. This year, we gained 32 kids back that weren't here last year, so I think we have to factor that into our thinking. We can't predict the future of that. If that trend continues, that's a big number coming back as well, on top of this.
And is this in elementary schools?
It's elementary, middle, and high. It's a charter school in district, and 32 kids came back to us from last year's number.
Mr. Collins?
I have more of a comment. I think this underscores not only this study, but the other study that Ms. Feather referred to, but I think this underscores the need for, particularly BF Norton. You know, this is the last meeting before the election for the bond, and one of the big parts of the bond, and what spurred the kind of momentum, obviously, the state extending the offer. But we only have so much room at the existing structure, even with renovations. And I remember asking you about a year ago when this popped up, what is the plan if we run out of room? So we have an option right now, you know, the voters have an option to build a brand-new school to meet this need that is clear as day, or we have kids in trailers.
Right now, if the bond was to be approved, we would have approximately 255 new seats to accommodate more students in the elementary level.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, good. All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Oh, Megan? Oh, she said good night. Good night.
Good night.
Yeah, and definitely to reiterate what Mr. Collins just said, as the bond question is on the ballot coming up, that we are definitely in need of expanding as much as we can. Next item on the agenda is approval of school safety plans.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Fiorello.
I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve the school safety plan as we discussed in executive session.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve the safety plans as we discussed, as was discussed in exec. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogalski. Any discussion? It's just to say that the school safety plans are not shared publicly for safety reasons, so that's why we handle that in executive. So we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes six to zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion and revote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2023, 2024 school year. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Rogalski to approve. Second by Mrs. Vogel. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes six to zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion and revote to approve resolutions. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. We have two resolutions this evening. We have SCPI-10-2023-167 and 2023-168. Both of the resolutions passed fiscal management subcommittee three to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve resolutions, SEPR-10, 2023, 167, and 168. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Vogel. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes six to zero. Next item, discussion and revote to approve payment of bills. Mr. Collins?
No bills.
No bills. Well, happy birthday to you, Mr. Collins. We can say happy birthday even more later, if you'd like. It is Mr. Collins' birthday today. Next item on the agenda, school committee comments, school liaison reports. Any comments from the school committee?
I'll go first.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Would you like to say something?
No.
Yeah, we can spare that.
I do, I do want to just make a little mini pre-announcement, but I know we will do this at a future meeting, school committee comments, that we have two students in the district who have been announced as National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. Out of over 1.2 million students nationwide that take the PSAT, about 16,000, or a little over 1% of students qualify to be a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. And then they will compete to become finalists in the spring. And the two students are Gauri Rajesh, Rajesh, and Nolan Rogalski, Mrs. Rogalski's son. So congratulations to these two students. I know we will recognize them at a future meeting, but this press release just came out very recently, so we wanted to just acknowledge how little bit here. Congratulations, Mrs. Rogalski. You had a little something to do with it. Any other comments? Mr. Fiorello? And Mr. Collins? Whoever wants to go first?
I just wanted to talk about the bond referendum that's coming up in two weeks. It is very important to the future of this town that this bond passes. Aside from, you know, the new playgrounds for Garvin, Cumberland Hill, and Ashton Schools, and all the new roof work that is desperately needed at the high school, not to mention an actual elevator at the North Cumberland Middle School. It is imperative that we rebuild, or build a brand-new BF Norton, so that we can turn that into a four-track school. As the Cropper report has just laid out, which is what we've already always known, is that our population in this town is increasing. We need these extra classroom spaces, these extra classroom seats. Otherwise, we're going to have a very serious population problem. If anyone in the public has any questions, comments, concerns, they should feel free to reach out to anyone on this committee. They should reach out to the superintendent's office, the mayor, town council. They should reach out to whoever they can to get, you know, their questions answered. So.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Mr. Collins?
Yeah, obviously, BF Norton's in Mr. Fiorello's district, so I had a feeling he was going to talk about it, but you have to vote, and you have to make sure your family votes, and the people next door to you vote, and anybody you talk to, you got to get down and vote. It's not a presidential election year where there's going to be high turnout, a congressional race, and then this. There's two things on the ballot, the congressional race and this in Cumberland. So I don't care what you do in the congressional race. I'll keep my opinions out of it, but you got to vote. You got to vote, regardless, even, just vote. Everybody should vote.
Mrs. Feather?
And I believe you can vote at town hall early, right? Yep. So if you are going to be away for any reason, then just go and vote early.
All right. Any other comments from the school committee? Mr. Fiorello?
I just want to thank the police department for the very fine trunk-or-treat that they had at Garvin School on Sunday. On Sunday. It was a great event, and the police did a nice job, as well as, you know, all the families, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Okay, next item on the agenda is vote to go into executive session. I don't believe we have that tonight.
Do not.
Next item is adjourned. I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather and Mrs. Vogel. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes six to zero. We are adjourned at 8:05 PM. Thank you, everyone, and make sure to get out and vote.